Okay, I call this work session of the Luray Town Council to order. Would you all please stand and join me for a moment of silence? Let's councilman Sowers lead us in our virtual.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this meeting of the town council is being held pursuant to the April thirteenth, twenty twenty ordinance for continuity in the government of Luray. The town clerk shall read the names of the council members present and identify those who are electronically present. In-person attendance by the public is permitted, subject to the limitations of the most recent executive order and phasing guidelines issued by Governor Northam. This meeting can be viewed live on the town's Facebook page and a recording will be available on the town's YouTube channel. Minutes from the meeting will be posted on the town's website after being approved by the town council. Danielle, will you call the roll, please?
May you do.
Here.
Mr. Bicker.
Here.
Ms. Lillard.
Here.
Mr. Sharrow.
Here.
Mr. Pettit.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
All right, Mr. Burke.
Yes, sir. First item on your agenda tonight is a request from Jake Dedman and the Broadport Coffee House at Twenty West Main Street to install fifteen-minute parking space at their business. Frank Chrisman has gone out there and measured and reviewed that we can adjust some of the parking out there to provide that fifteen-minute space and not lose any parking, additional parking spaces on West Main.
This doesn't require a motion, or does it?
Well, yes, it's a meeting. We just wanted to present it to you all today.
Just FYI.
If there's any questions or concerns.
I'd like to say something about his rationale about the, you know, other people parking there and be there all day. I know there's a, when we have church services on Sunday, there's a car that's right there on the side of the building where the doors are. I think it's from the tee house. I don't know. All I know is that if parking is like restricted for two hours or whatever, do we have a good system? Or does it take a complaint to have something follow that up?
We don't have restrictions out of the week yet.
But if, if there was a situation for restrictions in front of his place, is there any restrictions? Or is it, somebody can park there all day? Dedman's.
I don't know. We haven't signed for it.
So, so he's got a real complaint. People could use up the, his competition could park there and not have, you know, easy come and go to his coffee shop.
I believe it's quite efficient to have that.
Yeah, it makes sense, is what I'm thinking. I didn't understand what he meant by the next, the cobbler shop in the driveway. I didn't get that.
Well, he owns the building, two buildings down.
Right, but what's the driveway? What's he giving up?
Well, there's a driveway that says that he's not going to use and he would be fine if it was not parked.
So then it could be another space. Okay, got it. I got it. Thank you.
Well, if there's no concerns or questions, this wouldn't be our agenda for the main event.
Was there a reason that the first spot was far, that far back from where it curves in for the bridge?
Uh, that's basically where the flare started.
It's where the flare started, okay.
I will say I did go to the coffee shop on Saturday and the transformation of that building has just been amazing. You know, it's really, really nice on the inside and they're rental on the, you know, upstairs and I think there's, is there offices in the, in the basement as well?
Yes, sir. The plan is to have offices to be on the ground.
Yeah, I mean, it just.
That'd be nice to have place open. That'd be, that'd mean more cars on Main Street all the time.
So is that upstairs is a residential?
Uh, they're do, they're short-term rental.
I thought it was a B and B, Airbnb.
That's right.
Cause I saw it published. It's really, when I saw it online, it was pretty fancy looking upstairs.
I mean, they, they, Jay and Ryan, they do very, very good work. They're the things that I've seen.
All right, any other discussion on that? All right, Mr. Burke.
Next item for council's discussion tonight, the town has developed a co-amendment to our regulations to allow for or to provide regulations on sustainable energy systems within the town limits. We've presented to you all the code that would basically allow small-scale residential and commercial roof-mounted or small ground-mounted facilities to be permitted by right. And then anything larger would require a special use permit for consideration by the town. Planning Commission worked to develop this over the past year and they did recommend unanimously council's consideration and approval of the code.
So the, I don't have a problem with the, well, I don't think I have a problem with any of it. But the roof-mounted, I understand, no, no special use permit required that. But the accessory installation, fifty percent of the size of the existing dwelling or primary?
Yes, sir.
I mean, depending, depending on, I mean, that could be pretty substantial structure.
Yes, sir.
I'm just wondering if with the accessory installation, if we should, if it should be by special use. Just cause I'm just, it's always hard to predict the circumstances. And I mean, I don't think it could, could be a problem on, on, on the existing dwelling on the roof. But as an accessory, I mean, I know it's, the setback's quite substantial as well. So, I, I don't know. What rest of you think? I, I just have, it just kind of popped in my mind.
So we're talking about people that have put their solar panels on poles in their yards?
Well, it doesn't, that's what, they could do a lot of things with it. I mean, they could put it on a pole and it could be, if you have a really large house or, I mean, it could be a pretty substantially, pretty large structure.
Well, this could be a hot button item since we got the whole county up in arms.
I don't mean to make it a hot button item.
I know, Bob. See, I have panels on the house and we, they wouldn't need trouble to get them at the time. There was zoning permit wise, but I know Mr. Dibbert has some behind his house to, more panels. I don't see a problem with people putting solar panels in their yard.
I, I don't either. I, I just wonder if, it's always hard to contemplate every situation that might occur. And is it safer if it's not going to be a part of the primary structure to, to keep it a special use? That's.
I, I agree with what you're saying, but it, my concern is over time, how many of these freestanding structures change? You know, how they may evolve. So what we know is a freestanding structure now, five years may not look anything like that. But you know, we've got it by right, the way this is written now. I see what you're saying.
And all we're discussing right now is the solar, but this also would include wind and, and other options as well. So you have somebody with a big wind turbine sticking up in their yard. I mean, nothing would preclude that other than what would, what would prevent them from doing that?
That's a good point.
A hundred foot tall.
It is intended to be an all-inclusive, any, any energy generation, so yes, sir.
So I think we, we might hear something about that real quick if you have a big tower going up in someone's yard.
Don't we have a height to the house ordinance or height to the?
Well, the, the height restriction would.
They would for that. They would still.
It couldn't be taller than the main structure.
Was this in a subcommittee with the commission or did they work with someone? I was just curious.
No, this, the regional commission did develop the framework for this.
Make some meaningful statements.
The, the town used their framework to, to develop this, this co-amendment.
Thank you.
My only, I thought it was, I thought it was good. I would just, I mean, I would say for as far as setbacks, we've had a hundred and fifty percent setback requirements from the underlying zoning setback, which I think is a little funny way to say that. But I'd rather just personally, just rather be the same setbacks as all the other setbacks. But, and also on the, I guess on the, on the commercial others, as I am so soon? On the commercial, on the second page, I guess. I was just questioning the, I was just trying to think of other things, you know, that could be developed. I mean, a traffic impact study, that just seems a little bit odd for energy systems to me. And the other thing was, I mean, a balloon test and I didn't, I, I thought this was just solar. So I guess you're basically saying that they need to do some sort of a height test to show. And that, that makes more sense now, but obviously if it was, if it was solar, I mean, you really wouldn't have made. And I guess the other thing too is that the setbacks being two hundred percent. If it's a special use permit, and I was talking to Stephanie about this, is I've administered these ordinances and sometimes, you know, it kind of looks good on paper and you want to make sure you kind of keep them in a box. But it's always a, a case where someone comes along and, you know, and it's again, just the maybe the normal setbacks and that would be appropriate. So I'd be a little bit hesitant to say two hundred percent. And the same thing can be said for the vegetative buff, buffer of fifty feet. Again, if it's a special use permit, I feel like all those things can kind of be addressed. And maybe, and maybe it can be just written a little more vague or, you know, provide a vegetative buffer that's appropriate as shown on your site plan, something like that. I'm just saying fifty feet buffer with twenty feet high, twenty feet width and that's, that's, that's a pretty, that's a pretty big screening. So that's, that's all. I mean, again, I appreciate the planning commission with what they did. They were just a few little things that maybe, especially if it's a special use permit, I'd rather keep a little more open-ended. That's my, probably my part.
I'm glad this came up. I mean, I like the idea of having an ordinance before people do stuff. We didn't have one before this, I take it. So, yeah, cause I know when I was instrumental in getting that wind turbine in the hospital, it wasn't anything in the whole county. That's why it took over a couple of years to get all the stakeholders to create policy. I mean, it's going to come, one way or the other. Something's going to come, so we might as well be ready for it.
If I could, the, the traffic study, and again, the regional commission set this up for more of a scale of what the county was considering.
Right, right.
And the, the intent of that is more so the delivery and the removal, what the potential impacts would be. So it's basically to determine, you know, if you were having hundred trucks come in, what, what.
I mean, it's like during, during construction or decommission, I mean, but.
And then the setbacks, it's not the, based on, on the system setback, it's two hundred percent of the height of the structure, of whatever structure they proposed.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, okay.
That if you're putting a windmill, that it's going to be, you know, a hundred feet high, then you've got to have at least two hundred foot setback. I think that was the intent of, of the commission with that.
Okay.
Why is it limited to seventy-five percent of the roof, just for aesthetic reasons or?
I believe so, yes, sir.
I'm just curious. I don't know if anybody would want to do. The Tesla system would be a shingle replacement, so then that would be a hundred percent of roof, but.
And I think part of that is that, you know, if you're putting it on a home, typically only one side of the home would increase the majority. And so I think what it came down to was more of a flat roof of a, of a commercial building.
Okay.
And I think they wanted to preserve some, most of the commercial building typically would like to have the HVAC equipment, roof mounted impossible. So I think that was, I, I can't speak to the, the, where the seventy-five percent came from. I believe that it was more for a commercial consideration.
Sure, okay.
But staff can develop an option of having the small-scale accessory installation be included as the specialty permit that's council designed.
Council?
I mean, I, I think, I think it's a good idea, again, just to be on the safe side. If you had, if you had someone that had a large, deep lot and a big house, you know, you could get a pretty good sized.
Well, maybe make it, maybe make it if it's over a certain size, then you, you'd have to get a special permit. Maybe there's some way you could write it where, you know, it's by right up to a certain point and.
We can, we can reduce the size of the, that to maybe twenty-five percent or a hundred and two hundred to four feet. We'll come up with some number and present that to you all.
Okay, okay. Is this, is this advertised for next?
No, sir.
Okay, so we're.
The advertisement we had in the paper this week and we, we anticipated that there would be some discussion, so. No, sir.
Okay, all right.
So just to kind of elaborate when our conversation today, Ligon and I, when we were chatting about it, under the, the regulations, let's see, for item, for the setback requirement, the two hundred percent and the other is often, again, as to not to box this in, but to allow it to be dictated on a case-by-case for the application. And so if we, even if we were to move forward with the language as it's suggested, at the bottom of page one, where it says, "Application for SUP for Sustainable Energy System Project Shall", it may be as simple as moving, changing the word "shall" to "may". And that might give us a little bit of wiggle room moving forward. So we're not saying that, that every application must adhere to that, because there may be times it would be appropriate based on the application and the size of the property, that we might consider it, you know, approved in less than the two hundred percent.
Yes, we can, we can change that to "should". Rather than "shall".
Mr. Pocket's not here. I think in the legal world though, if, if that becomes "may", then you have the, the, the problem with someone not wanting to conform to what you do want in this and.
Right, so.
We don't have a legal standard.
Yeah, so it, yes, but it would also be, say, they would be regulated or, you know, enforcement would be done based on the letter of their SUP, not based on the letter of this, this wording here, "may" or "shall". They would have to act in accordance with that specific SUP that was granted to them for that request. And so the conditions set forth within that individual SUP then is how Mr. Chrisman or whoever that, that enforcement officer is.
Yeah, I think we always want to have a rationale why we say, you know, this is why we need you to have more setback because you're close to this, you know, neighborhood or whatnot. So I don't think we'll just arbitrarily say, so, and I, Stephanie, I just, when dealing with these things, it just, when you kind of box yourself in, you just always find, there's always that exception, sometimes right out the gate. So I like the idea of making it "may" and if it is a special use permit, then we have the ability to sort of review each one on their merits and put conditions on it as, I don't see it really as a big deal either way, don't get me wrong. But, you know, if we're going to add it, I'd rather have a little more flexibility.
I mean, I think this is a case where it's, it's good that we're being proactive as opposed to being reactive to an application having been received. But it also puts us in a position where we don't, we cannot look at the need or and/or demand. There's, there hasn't, that's not been established. And so right now, we're kind of following the lead of the PDC based on maybe perhaps regional best practice or what other localities or jurisdictions are doing in similar size to us. But that might not also be a fair, like copy and paste, given the uncertainty of what the application may or may not look like for our community. And so, right, we adopt this and perhaps it might be a little overly conservative. And then we find ourselves, well, perhaps we were too aggressive with it. And then we have to get back to doing amendments, which can be, come costly. So that's the only reason I was, you know, suggesting we might consider a simple language change.
Having that fear of us being too lenient to have that same issue.
Absolutely.
To remember, we've got to go back and say, whoa, we didn't realize that this and this was going to happen and we can't.
Yes, sir.
Regulate that or.
Yes, sir. No, I hear you. And, and again, I think it's just from, from my experience in doing a little bit of this work previously is, again, that's where the control was really sets with the individual SUP that is issued. Right, but again, every applicant, if they are granted a special use permit for purposes of erecting and/or, you know, developing a standalone sustainable energy product, they, again, individually, they would have to adhere directly to those conditions that are set forth in that SUP. So there, there will not be a copy and paste. Every SUP will not likely look the same. Does that make sense?
Yes. Well, we'll make some of those changes and bring it back.
Just, yeah, I would, I would encourage you to take what I have shared back to the PDC and just, and get a more perhaps professional opinion on that. They, I suspect know a little bit more about this than I do, but I'm just speaking from, you know, a few years that I worked in this, in this field.
Any other discussion on that topic? All right, Mr. Burke.
Next item for y'all's consideration and discussion is co-amendments to section ninety-eight of our park regulations. We're proposing a couple of additions in ninety-eight thirty-three to speak towards people introducing or removing plants, animals, or natural materials. We're also wanting to establish that no one should cut a tree down in our parks for fire abuse and that they should not do any digging or excavating in the park unless they're authorized by the superintendent and that any metal detecting for the person, purpose of excavating would be required of town council approval. And then under ninety-eight forty-one, we're basically trying to prohibit paintball, archery, anything like that unless the park superintendent has issued an authority or authorization for that.
Well, I like it. Well, I see, but I guess I want to ask, is, is any of this been a problem that we've had?
Well, we're starting to get a number of, an increase in the number of metal detecting requests.
People digging up the.
Yes, sir. And then there's just, we, we, we don't want the parks to become, uh, I know that there's a few areas where the lakes have been inundated with mussels or other things because people just dump them or carry them on the boat that they bring to the, to the lake. So we're just trying to recognize issues that thankfully haven't happened here, but could potentially happen here.
I'm curious about the metal detecting. Is that on the beach or is that actually on the greenway in other places? Where are people doing that?
They've mainly been down Lake Arrowhead.
At the beach or actually or just around the grounds?
We, we get general requests for any park facility. I think folks that are willing to do that, can be, are open on in any, any open area that they can get.
I'm sure they are.
Yeah, where, where it poses an issue is that, for instance, each of our, our larger parks have some characteristics that, that I think it is not in our business to allow that, you know. On the greenway, it's primarily, primarily aesthetic, so.
Of course.
There's our energy turf there, but we, we just don't, we just don't want the coast raining with rain in certain places. At Rockview, we are trying to manage the turf that we have to maintain, so, you know, that's, that's definitely not our advantage there. And it's primarily safety, and also at Lake Arrowhead, because it's actually critical that we do not have anyone digging on our dams or anything. For us to assume that someone knows what is part of the dam and what part is not the dam is, that's just not, that's just not reasonable. And so, you know, while we do realize that there are, there are some serious relic hunters and people who do appreciate how to dig for, for certain items and replace the turf. But I, what I fear based on the number of requests that we already have this year is that, is that once we open it up, even if we try to put some regulations, not everyone will follow those and other folks won't ask for permission. So even though we have standards, the park's different in so many different areas, it's just, I think it's our advantage not to allow it.
No, thank you.
Or at least allow it to be, they have to come to you all to make that request.
I honestly, I mean, appreciate you going to bring to the town council, but I would totally be okay if, if two of you made that decision. Personally, but, you know, that's just my opinion. It would have changed.
Has there been paintball wars out there?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not at all.
I know there's, there seems to be a lot of vandalism in our system. I didn't know if kids doing that or adults doing that would be part of what's happening yet. I'm glad to hear it's not happening, the paintball.
Well, there has been vandalism, we, the incidents that we've been able to identify have, have been used in Rockview County.
Well, it's hard to catch every vandal too. I understand that. But, you know, the, the main thing that's happened is they, they turn up the bathrooms, I guess, because like people can get in there and they don't be seen.
Yeah, we recently had some vandalism on two eleven, you know, the overpass bridge, which we're taking care of today. But it's quite frequent to see, you know, RTV on all of our other structures and our bathrooms tables really part of it. Most people just really need to air off duty to new stations, like new routers and seal a little paper out of the thing. Who recently got a report that they broke a lot of the toilet paper, the L B portables. So it's just, it is just ongoing and it's, it's just the reality of it. But it's, it's just frustrating on our end because maybe changing these things should cost over a hundred dollars. And when you're replacing this consistently, it adds up pretty quickly.
Anybody else on this subject? Jason?
I've got one thing that's a little off-topic. I'm fine with both of the corrections or additions that we're looking at. On this, I was just scanning through the rest of the codes. I'm assuming this is going to have to get advertised and everything before it comes back for an amendment. Section ninety-eight thirty-seven caught my eye. The loudspeakers and amplified sound equipment, states no person should operate any radio, tape player, amplified, amplified sound equipment in any park in such manners to be plainly audible at a distance of fifty feet or more. I wonder if we should put a little disclaimer or something in there. That shall not apply to special events or concerts approved or hosted by the town. Because the way that reads, we have many events throughout the year that is something that involves a PA with, to a group or even concert, that it should probably have something there to.
Yes, sir.
Good point.
To give us the freebie. All right.
Actually, we'd have to turn off the speakers during baseball games as well.
Oh, really?
So, yeah.
All right, anybody else on this? All right, Mr. Burke, you're still up?
Yes, sir. Next item for council's discussion tonight is to discuss your availability to do tours of the water and wastewater facilities. Due to the size and, and multiple locations too, we, we would recommend doing maybe a water day and then a wastewater day. And then determine, because the water system not only includes the plant, but also includes the reservoir and some of the tanks. The wastewater system includes some of the lift stations as well as the, the plant. So we anticipate that it would probably take at least an hour to an hour and a half for each entity. So just wanted to see if there's a preference of council that we can do on Saturday morning or any evening.
I don't mind weekday if it's later in the afternoon. I mean, is it too late to do one at five o'clock when most people get off?
If, if our superintendent's new in advance, we can, we can work with council to do that.
Steve, can we do the wastewater and the water treatment plant the same day or you're saying that's going to take two?
Well, it depends on how you want to do it. I mean, the, the, in, in discussion with, with Joey in town, if, if y'all don't want to see the, the reservoir and don't want to go down, if y'all don't want to go to Morning Star on Lake Arrowhead to see where additional water supply can occur, we, yeah, the, the plant, the, the water plant probably wouldn't take more than a, than a half hour, forty-five minutes to see the facilities. But if you wanted to include where we're pulling water from, where we could pull water from, where we store water, then it gets to be a more lengthy tour. So again, however y'all want to do it, if, if it's simply you want to do the, the plant tours, yes, sir, we could probably do that at the, on the same, same evening, same morning.
I would suggest we just schedule the plant tours now and then to see how that goes and wait another couple of weeks or whatever and see if we want to continue with another tour. We still need to pick a date for the plant tours.
Well, just a general, you know, what, what, what day of the week would probably work best for y'all and all of the town? And Joey's going to figure out, maybe it's next week or the week after.
Anybody good for a Saturday morning?
I'd rather do it on a weekday in the late evening, keep my Saturday to other stuff I got to do. But if that's all we can do, I can do it.
Well, plus you have to bring the staff.
Something other than the Saturday morning would work better for me too with the business, but it's.
And again, if there's, uh, Wednesday night, Tuesday night, I, I assume that since this, you know, the work session Tuesday night seems to work for everyone, if we could do it either the next Tuesday or the following Tuesday, that would, I wouldn't do the all schedules. Okay, I'll talk with, with Joey in town tomorrow and let y'all know if we can do it next week or, or the following week.
Thinking about five o'clock, is that what we're, okay, very good.
That's okay with everyone, council.
The eighth would be better if possible than the first.
So we're looking at Saturday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
What was that date, eight?
Mess up your dinner.
That would be the fourth, the eleventh.
What's the eighth? Mother's Day or something? When's Mother's Day?
The ninth.
All right, Steve, the, I guess we're through with that. The hundred and fiftieth anniversary.
Yes, sir. The town is celebrating its hundred and fiftieth. Uh, yes, sir, um, the town is celebrating its hundred and fiftieth, um, year as a, an incorporated town, which differs from the founding, uh, the fou- we were founded in eighteen twelve, we were incorporated in eighteen seventy-one, next year will be our two hundred and twentieth year as a town from the founding, this year's the hundred and fiftieth, uh, we weren't planning to do anything significant, talking with Jennifer, we could roll in just a hundred and fiftieth, um, take or advertising for the Fourth of July event, if council wanted to do anything more, uh, if you wanted to buy, uh, to have the town have sure tax or something like that for the hundred and fiftieth, we would have to identify funding for it, um, so it's just a matter of, it, it's a big deal, but it's not as big a deal as next year would be our two twenty, two hundred and twentieth, so I'm not sure where council wants to focus our.
What's our, I'm sorry, I feel ignorant, what's two hundred and twentieth happening next year?
We were, the, the, the town was founded in eighteen twelve.
Okay, got it.
We were incorporated in eighteen seventy-one. So this is our hundred and fiftieth year as an incorporated town, next year will be our two hundred and twentieth year as a town.
Jen, are we having a, planning a full-blown Fourth of July this year, or what are we looking to, I know it, things are still up in the air, but what are we, what are we looking at?
You know, I think, I think, uh, last year and the previous year, we had the Downtown Get Down, which was kind of developed to replace the festival spring and bring a different component to our events with, uh, music and food and, uh, beer gardens, and so, uh, heading into this year, we need to make a call, as to whether we, we were willing to continue that, and so we, what we decided to do was to merge that into the line four, and so this year's the line four will have the, uh, will have the music and food truck component to it, um, along with fireworks as we had done last year at the fairgrounds, uh, we're working now with, uh, L D I, the G I P, to see if they would also like to incorporate, uh, more of a, uh, business, shopping, some food and music event on a smaller scale, starting at maybe new, I mean, the details of this really, I think, L D I's been working through that, whether we're gonna prove that, we, we brainstorm, I think she's talked to some of the downtown residents to see if they're like clearing their businesses out on the street, uh, you know, bringing picnic tables, or, and let the downtown, uh, food menus, kind of some digital launches or sort, you know, we've had to work through those details, so we kind of combined Downtown Get Down with July four, uh, we've now running two stages with music, to my knowledge, Castle has their party on the claws we're scheduled for that evening, uh, and there is a potential again for L D I bringing in the music venue on a smaller scale, somewhere within the downtown area, um, sometime in the middle of the afternoon hours, so we're, we're still working on combining the L D I operation with that, so, so we took those two events, combined them, um, but yes, it, it should be full, full scale July four.
Right.
It would seem like that would be the probably most practical way of, with the one fifty would be incorporated with that, you know, join us for our hundred and fiftieth year and our Fourth of July celebration and.
Yeah, and we, we, we talked about the possibility of developing, uh, with the Santa Arts to do just a sort of simple logo, then we could put our advertising and flyers if council decides if they want to have any, any memorabilia for that, then we could replicate it on that, and if L D I decides to use their portion of it, we could, they could, they could also use that logo and, and then it will all be branded in one hundred and fifty celebration of sorts, and it's tied all of that together nicely.
Yeah.
Probably want to make it pretty clear that the incorporation part, otherwise be like, wait a second, two hundred and twenty, it was just a hundred and fifty last year, what a, so I don't know.
I can see somebody saying that.
Have to get creative to figure out.
I think anything we do to celebrate the town is, is good, I mean, it gets people out, and help commerce, should may, maybe it should be some kind, type of little trinket or something that all the merchants in town can sell the same day that, I don't want to subsidize stuff, but, you know, the must-have item, you gotta have this thing on your tree next year, that kind of thing. This graphic though bothers me, it's, it looks like fifteenth, uh, the Luray Virginians is a circle, that, that threw me off for a while.
Trying to keep it on your toaster.
No, I think it's trying to mix me up.
But again, we're gonna work with stand-out arts.
Okay.
Cool.
I got it right away.
You did. I knew you would. That's how you're mayor.
That's right.
As our mayor should.
Yeah. All right, let's move on, all right, anybody else on the hundred and fiftieth? All right, Mr. Burke?
Well, yes, sir, uh, we had planned to have, uh, representatives or department heads from police, public force, and Parks and Rec, unfortunately, due to an incident on Main Street, our, uh, Public Force Superintendent is actually out putting out, uh, road code signs due to, uh, a building issue on, on Main Street, but we do have, uh, Police Chief and, and our Superintendent of Parks and Recreation, uh, and, uh, are here to address any questions y'all might have about, uh, the general importance of the.
Well, Bo, can you tell me if, in the budget, right as it's presented, will there be enough cars for all your officers to drive one home? Well, I want to see that happen, if we can't pay these guys enough, at least we can give them a perk of being able to drive a car home so they don't have to share with somebody else.
Well, and, that is a, a separate item that was included with, for, for discussion, uh, due to recent events and, and ongoing decrease in the number of, uh, individuals going into law enforcement, uh, we are, uh, not only Luray, but just statewide, nationwide, there is an increased demand for individuals in law enforcement, which is creating a, an, an issue for communities to retain and attract new officers, so the, the police, uh, the Chief Cook has put together a, a, a memo basically outlining a couple of items that he believes would be necessary for the town to remain competitive, one of which is take-home vehicles, um, we would like to discuss with council, once the American Relief, uh, American Rescue funding, uh, has been quantified and, and we know exactly what we can use it, that we believe that the purchase of vehicles for law enforcement will be included as it had been in the CARES Act, so we believe that that would allow us to move forward with some acquisition of, of vehicles, uh, but, uh, we've, we're, we're still awaiting final, uh, information and guidelines as to the American Relief funding, but then as soon as we get it, we'll share that with council so that we know what we can do.
Just, just out of curiosity, are police officers, uh, how, how many are right in Luray or around Luray, uh, I know, I know Mike lives in Woodstock, I believe, um, and I know it's common to take home, and I've noticed it more, you know, just in people leaving, and that seems to be a benefit, does it, when they take them home, does it leave us in a situation where we don't have enough cars, I mean, or anything?
Well, that's the point, the, 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 the.
Oh, I got you, right.
Plus, I'm thinking it would, that's, since we have to go to policy, or policy, um, I put this in saying, you know, but, we have a lot of the, the, the policy, uh, retaining the operation, and driving now, but we have to come up with a policy on, on, on.
Yeah, I think, um, I think it, we need to, we need to come up with a comprehensive plan for recruitment and, and retention of the police officers, and I think the take-home vehicles is certainly a part of it, but I think also making sure we're competitive with, um, entry-level salaries and, and, um, with our more senior officers as well, that we're competitive with some of those salaries, and I, I know the budget for, I'm wondering, can, and I mentioned it dur- back earlier during the, the budget process, that some of the CARES funding, can we, can we plug that in on the revenue side as an anticipated revenue, and then your market to pay for some of the capital items that we think might be fundable, uh, on the, with the CARES money, which would free up some of the other money for operational side for, uh, for salaries increases?
In talking with Jason, because the guidelines had not been established, he recommended that council proceed with the budget as presented without any indication that funding could be adjusted based on the, uh, American Relief funding, that said, we do anticipate that the guidelines will be similar to CARES Act, which would allow, uh, which would include offsetting, um, law enforcement salaries and, and things of that, that nature, it's just because the guidelines have not been formalized, it's, it's hard to say, yes, we're going to anticipate that as a revenue stream without fully knowing that it is available.
Six ten P M.
Uh, most likely it, it, it will be, but it's, it.
You, you said August, Steve, is that what you suspect?
Uh, uh, Jason thinks that it'll be no later than August if the guidelines will come out, because it's, it's August where they, they've indicated that the funding will be dispersed, so I, I.
But it's more, I mean, I, I, all due respect, uh, certainly legal counsel, I defer to their judgment, but, uh, if it's, if more or less a pass-through kind of thing in terms of, if the funding's not there, then the, the capital items that we anticipate spending on, we, we would have to either defer the purchase of them or, um, take it from the reserves that, uh, that you'd planned on before, and so the worst-case scenario would be that we take, you know, it, what is our unrestricted, uh, reserve balance now?
Everybody else has it.
Generally, and.
I think it's, it's still, I have to go back to the, the August, well, I apologize, it, it, I, I think there are almost about two million.
At one time it was three million, then another time it was one million.
But, so, I mean, that's ballpark, I mean, I'd say that, that would be the worst-case scenario, then that we'd take more from the reserves and.
And, and again, we, uh, staff cannot, um, fund or propose a budget that, that would fund, you know, op- operational things with, with fund balance, now that it is up to, it is your budget for consideration, council can definitely amend the budget in a way that you would, you, you feel comfortable, that would include either fund balance or potential other sources of income.
No, I understand that, um, but if we want to, I mean, we, that's the only in, kind of back-of-the-envelope kind of thing, I saw that we've got an opportunity there to, to grab some funding, um.
Well, one other that I was, that I saw potentially was in debt service, particularly in utilities and water and sewer, we have quite a bit allocated towards that, or towards principal in particular, I don't know if that's part of our, those loan agreements that we, that's the minimum on the amortization schedule, or if that's just us trying to pay down our debts, but if there's any hope at all that we can allocate any of that funding towards debt service on utilities, then.
It, it's just a lot cleaner if we can keep it on general fund and general fund, I mean, if we, the same debt service, if you'll see on the general fund side, if, if some of those capital items were, could be paid for.
Yeah.
Rather than, than, uh, funded with debt service, um, that would free up the same, and it would still all be on the general fund side, we can do it, yeah, I mean, I, I don't think there's anything prohibiting us if we want to transfer some money out of utilities, but it's usually not a.
That's fair, yeah, that's, that's a good point, yeah, that's a good point.
The only, unfortunately, one of the few definites that we have received from, uh, the, the federal government, is that use of the American Relief Fund for utility will not, will not be allowed until.
Right, second.
Second year.
Yeah, I don't think there's any.
So, that's the only, that's one of the few definites that they have, they have provided to us so far, is that the first year is intended to be COVID-related, law enforcement COVID-related, and then the second year is when they anticipate doing some, that they, they, they would allow the, um, the, the funding for other programs.
Well, can I ask you a question, what, uh, just real brief, where, where are we at on our police officer staffing, um, and what, you know, what are you down right now, I know you, we talked about it a little bit, and what is the, the starting salary, and as far as the five thousand dollars, show me a budget where a five thousand dollar increase is given to, uh, you know, entry-level police officers, and if it does take a revenue adjustment, that's a conversation we can have, but I'm all for it, there's no question about that, so you can just kind of.
All three, as much, they're all three.
Three.
Two were due to, uh, paying increases, all for not, we're treating a lot of the department, um, one was on medical, uh, due to basically, uh, an injury, uh, because it would have occurred, um, then the, um, I have three officers being injured now from the agencies, um, I have a major agency that increased their pay for officers, and, um, I've talked long enough to believe, he, he might be setting me up, and I've talked to him last time, it's basically, um, I called several departments, um, looking at, uh, neighbor and neighbor seats, and it's not forty-five thousand, there's a certain salary, uh, a quality count, it's forty-two, for thirty-seven, five ninety-nine, um, and thirty-five, um, so, Charlesburg's going to be forty-two thousand, and just trying to stay in the range of.
So when you get certified, would you go up then, I mean?
Yes, so, um, but right now, my biggest thing is not losing anybody else, uh, we have, uh, it's over a hundred and four years experience in the bargain, uh, and I had a lot of them coming in.
There's half of it.
But, 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 but,[1655.12]
Is there a contract done here with a new hire on the?
Yeah, one of the little lady. I was rather cheap, but we're ready to agree.
Okay, because we had that as well with the county.
But I agree with you, a lot of them are just even, if they have the contract that's paid and all. I have some departments that are losing their ass even if they don't contract.
Yeah, well, at least, but at least the taxpayer recouped something. You, you, you are getting back that, that money that was spent.
Weren't those, weren't some of those contracts shot down in the courts?
No, no, that's still.
They still stand?
Yeah, yeah, still standing. And now, in that, that return or payback is, it's based on a, on a scale, of course. You know, each, there's less and less, you know, as the years go on, or as the time goes on. But, anyway, I'm just, I know we've got a heck of a challenge there. One thing I will say, with the take-home cars, I agree that is attractive. I would like to see us first focus on salaries before we think of take-home cars, because the take-home cars could be something that's disproportionate as well. You could have a guy that lives four blocks from the PD, gets a take-home car. Well, that's a little something extra, but the guy that lives twenty miles away, he's the one that really got the benefit with the take-home car, more so than the guy that just lives around the corner. So, those are, I'm not saying no to take-home cars. I'm just saying I think we need to focus on salaries as the first thing as we move along. There's a lot on the front right now with this, and trying to figure it out, but it's a tough time.
Of course, with take-home cars, wouldn't that also have that incentive of being able to pull people that already live in the county or the region? And now we're able to attract them more, would it have that benefit, you feel? Without them having to move, of course, you know, moving to a new community?
Take-home car is a plus. I don't think that's the real game changer. I think the salary's gonna be the start, and then the other.
I agree with you, and the other part of the guy that's, that's very important.
Yeah, but, but what I'm saying is, the guy that lives close doesn't have the same benefit as the guy that's driving twenty miles one way.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah, it's. But a raise in salary, you know, is, is equal to all of them.
But I think the take-home car is a, is an easier fix than a salary, given the, some of the funding that we have available to us, if we can get the.
Well, with what's going on right, right, with what's happening with funding.
I mean, I think we need to do them both, and I think we can do them both. But I'm, I'm thinking that to implement the take-home program is, given the opportunity we have with, with some of the CARES funding, I think that that's, and i- it's a big step. And, but, and I'm sure you've, you've seen it too, in the age of some of the agencies, but it's, the program has merit, not only from the standpoint of the benefit, but the, with the fleet and maintenance and that kind of thing. There's, it's proven that it's, you know, that if you, once we get into the, once we get the program going, per vehicle, it'll be cheaper to maintain than the way it is now with them operating.
How many vehicles are we short on that? Three?
Will that still avail a vehicle for your part-time people when they're working?
Yes, that's the one, yeah. We're also on.
Would you still need a vehicle like if, if someone's vehicle's due for service or in the shop? That, okay, right, does somebody have to still get home if they have to leave theirs here for service or maintenance?
What, what's the overall condition of the fleet now, I mean, in terms of?
Pretty good. We actually have, we have fifteen, so we're actually twenty-five, thirty thousand a year per vehicle. So, we're getting around to eighty-one, so two thousand, I mean, I'm getting already, almost twelve, thirty, or two thousand fifty, and it's getting around eighty-nine thousand. So, we're trying to get to one hundred twenty with it.
So, what's the cost of a cruiser and equipping it right now?
Um, but, there, there's a variance. So, chargers are twenty-four plus, so it's about eight, seven thousand, eight thousand to equip one. So, you're about thirty thousand with charger. Uh, interceptors just want to be, want to be eight thousand, I believe. The new four interceptors plus eight thousand to equip it. Um, you got, uh, the tar, the raincoats are just probably five each, so that's a forty-six thousand, I believe, plus eight thousand.
Is that with the, is that projected with the, the radio equipment upgrades? Or is that, is that with the existing radio system?
It worked out with the radio company was, we were purchasing the new radios with the equipment purchase, and included under the CARES Act, and we weren't even, so actually ready to install. So, we've already purchased three of the radios, out of the hundred ten thousand. But, yeah, we go with the new cruisers. So, when we do that transfer, we have new radios already taken care of. So, our plan is to incorporate that inside of all this CARES Act.
Uh, back to Parks and Rec, I see the structures, property, maintenance, and repairs. It, the request was seventy-four K, it went down to fifteen. So, what is, what, what are we doing for fifteen? I'm just curious. Let's see, there's some big budget items in there. What tennis court repairs, Ruffner Plaza, sales, shade, structure?
Sure. So, um, this is the infrastructure repairs, uh, all of the other parts, that's been located in the office. Um, it's, it's currently pretty much the usual, um, same surface. I think, um, that there is, um, good a need for resurfacing and re-striking of that for several years. Last year, and we replaced the tennis net. And, um, so we've got an updated equipment for the net and incorporating, um, striking pickleball lines to make the courts, um, get a whole wide use for that facility.
For wha, for what?
Pickleball?
Oh, pickleball, okay.
Yeah, so that's like the upcoming, really, really popular sport. Really gained a lot of momentum in this past year as well. I've never played it, but I know, I know people who, who are like, hey, we need to.
Let's finish the game for a guy.
So, um, and I think that would be a, a great investment for our facilities. We have a lot of infrastructure that's made of wood, and it has, you know, reached the end of its useful lifespan. We have a number of shelter roofs. We have a plan now heading forward to replace, uh, some, some roofs, particularly at Lake Arrowhead, with a great, the voice count and shelter. We're getting ready to also do a replacement over time for any shelter. And, and so we did an assessment of all the roofs, and we have, um, we have that plan for getting, getting that addressed. We have a footbridge, a lot of our footbridges on the greenway are, I believe, walkable recently, but they're a bit soggy, and so there's one in particular in their parking lot. And this, this company needs that, and that for that.
Let me ask a question. It looks like you do have money in the budget right now for the imagination station redo. Do you have everything you want for that?
Yeah, I think we, we took a look at, at that RFP and made some slight adjustments based on, uh, the responses that we got previously, and we find that, and make sure that, now that we know what our options are, that we're asking for some specific components that we really like, so we can have a chance actually to do a redo on this, and pull out some components that we really like, but we wouldn't have thought about otherwise because they were different.
Well, I remember when you first talked about different companies and structures, I got pretty excited about the new equipment I didn't know existed. I'd love to see what the plan is before we buy it, just to know what it is.
Well, we, we, our plan is, Jennifer and her staff have finalized the bid. We're hoping to put the bid out in May, so that by the time this budget goes into effect in July, we will have bids, so that during July, we'll be able to present to council the recommended bid for award for the replacement of Imagination Station. So, yes, sir, you will be presented with all of the.
I know I'll be asked when it's gonna start happening. Is there a timeline? Is it like this fall, is it gonna start changing over?
Yes, sir. Again, the plan is to, to put the bids out in, in May, and be able to hopefully award sometime in July, August timeframe, and then working with the, the contractor. Part of the way that the bid is structured, park staff will have to do the demolition of.
Okay.
And we anticipate that should be done by the time the contractor is ready to start construction. So, yes, sir, late summer, we would anticipate, uh, the.
See, my wife always asks me about, when I tell her something about a highway improvement, and that's like three years down the road. At least this one is like the same fiscal year, it seems like.
Yes, sir.
Seems to me that that would be, um, I hate to keep, you know, referring to the CARES money, but it's hard to ignore that you could get a couple million dollars. So, I mean, and realistically, I think, and, and if we're, if we're doing due diligence and, and budgeting, the playground may be a, something that would fit, fit in the box for funding straight out.
Yes, sir. And, but the three seventy-five that you see in the budget line item, we are anticipating doing a, deliver it to ten-year loan with BBNT. So, the, the amount in the budget is actually, I think, seventy, eighty thousand dollars.
No, I understand that, but I'm, what I'm saying is, if, if we, if we get it in in August, early in the budget year, and we've got the guidelines to go with it, rather than incurring the debt.
Yes, sir. And part of the discussion has been that recreational facilities should qualify.
Yeah, they, you would think so, you would think so. And that's a, that would be a big chunk there that would free up some money on the general fund side.
I think I missed a little bit of the idea of, we keep putting money in this tennis court that's never gonna get fixed, in my opinion. I'd love to start doing some kind of tennis court just out there, even if we just put up a fence one year, then a couple more years later, we put in the surface. I don't know. It seems like we're putting money in that tennis court year after year.
Have a play court over there.
You got plenty of that around here, come over to my yard.
I'm, I'm tired of resurfacing.
She also got a quote to, to do new construction. So, if funding does become available, we have, we have estimates of what it would take to put in a, a new lighted double court.
Yes, I have, I have heard, um, also estimates for one, two, three, and two courts.
Wow.
I'm glad I asked, 'cause I hadn't heard that yet.
So, you all build a fence before we build the court?
No, that wasn't, I understood that. I knew the way it came out, you'd gonna have a right. But it just, it doesn't seem like we've been putting money in that thing by the, we don't even own that, do we, the American Legion? I didn't think we did.
I will say this, though, until something new is built, I go by that probably six or eight times a day.
Yeah.
And there, there's people on it all the time.
There still is.
All the time, yeah. It's, there you go. It's busy. You probably have to wait some when you go, right? So, I mean, it's filling the need until something better, till we get there.
So, we can't tear it down until we get a new one built, isn't what you're saying?
Right, yeah.
But when do we have to do the repairs? Are they critical, or? Like Rod says, we keep up.
I'm just gonna be quite honest, we have brought some, I've had some contractors out there, and they'll take a look at the surface, and one of them was, basically said it was, now, maybe he said it was a liability, I'm just not so sure, but there are some cracks in the surface feeling there that, you know, it would be very easy to, to strip off that. Um, you know, and I, and I think one of the things is that, is that we priced the estimate for those repairs, which included the destriving and all that, at about fourteen thousand dollars. And then we got the quotes back for what it would take to do a night, a new lit facility at Ground Team Park, all level round, where you would have very minimal, uh, surface grading. Um, and for, they mentioned you were from a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars for one tennis court, up to three hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
That's the difference right there.
That's the difference. And so, and so I would, you know, I would rather spend fourteen thousand and have a usable facility, particularly since we could make it multi-use with a pickleball courts on the lines, than wait another how many years before three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars becomes a reality for tennis courts. So, it is, and I did base it just on the fact that that facility is in this repair. I have had multiple requests for, hey, can we, you know, are we finally gonna resurface that? Or, you know, so, um, it's not basically just my opinion on that. I think there are a lot of people in the community that are fully using that facility, uh, and at this point, it's very underwhelming, I, so.
How much was two courts, Jen? I'm sorry. How much was it for two courts?
Uh, two courts was two hundred and thirty thousand.
Got it?
Um, well, we've discussed this before, and let, let me, uh, do a little investigation in this before we move forward. We are gonna have to add some bleachers over there when the cooks play, because there's a large crowd over there, and they're very politely clapping like that, and it's very. What'd you say? And a ball boy, a ball, basketball, basketball court, okay.
Did, did they give you an indication, if you resurfaced it, how long the surface would stay in?
So, suppose there are the, you know, you have the automatic level, and then you have the, you know, the BMOV level. There are, there are certain products and certain ways of milling out the cracks just to, uh, to do that. Um, but essentially, some of them have specific, uh, fillers and, and systems that will provide a longer guarantee. However, once the crack is established, you will never get rid of it, because, you know, it just will continue to elongate. And so, uh, the fourteen thousand dollar estimate does not include the additional five-year warranty for, for additional cracks. So, it would, it would just probably buy it some time. Now, we, we talked with the contractors, we did learn that there are some other manual maintenance things that, that could be done. There's a significant depression in the court, and so if you get rain or snow, and it comes to the pool there, with all these little issues, hopefully with the resurfacing, then we'd be able to level that out and eliminate that to an extent. However, if we invested in resurfacing it, then it would be up to us to also make sure that leaves do not accumulate, and then if there was a way to, to get excess water off, uh, or snow, whatever, it would be, the, the more water that sits on there, the worse the cracks get. That's just a simple term. So, I think it just kind of reached the point where the surface was not, was not really suitable, and so the rest of the maintenance kind of fell to the wayside, so. And it would be a combination of how well the treatments work, and then how well we.
I mean, you think about it, even if it bought us four years, you're talking thirty-five hundred dollars a year for the amount of use that gets, that's a.
Yeah, I think that's.
That's what I was, I'm, I'm wondering, how many more years do we wanna keep fixing something? That's all I'm thinking.
I don't know, I don't know how long a new court would last, for that matter.
Wait until Jerry will get a fund, a donor, I guess.
No, I, I, give it a little bit. Now that we have some figures, I can, I can work on that. We didn't have the figures before. Do we have lights over there?
Mm-hmm.
On the, on the American Legion court, are the lights, are they very good, or? Chief, do you play at night, or?
That's not what I heard.
Um, I had one other question, just to, the, on the, for Parks and Rec. Um, the park ranger thing, um, I, I kinda, I, I guess I misunderstood when we, when we presented initially. We, I thought we were just changing titles of existing.
The park maintenance worker title, we, we were proposing to change that to park ranger.
Okay, well, but in here it says twenty hours a week for seasonal weekend park ranger.
Yeah, I can explain that. That's when I did the budget for social, um, that is, just a seasonal position. His title would not be park ranger, um, but he would range the parks. He would help us design the facility for peak usage, uh, also perform additional maintenance.
Okay, so it's, 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 it's an additional position, a twenty-hour-a-week position?
Just a seasonal position.
Just to go back to, to Bo and salaries on your entry level, I mean, is that any way that we can, I mean, make that work in this budget cycle?
Effectively, yes, sir. If, if, if council desires, uh, we can go ahead and, and ensure maintenance, if that is your desire. We can include a, an action to establish a minimum salary for our patrol officers, up to forty-two thousand dollars. Uh, again, all, all that that would, would require would be, be juggling, um, funds. So, yes, sir, we can, we can do that in May, if, if that is council's desire.
I would presume that the idea is that it would effectively push most staff members up that, that amount, right? Not just the entry level?
Yes, sir, there's a few.
Maybe we leave Bo out of the equation, but, uh.
Yeah, it, it, it should be significant. Most of the officers that we hired are, I don't think we hired anyone that thirty-seven, I think it's more, thirty-eight, thirty-nine.
I mean, I would, I would assume if we're gonna make an entry level one at forty-two, that would. I wanna bring them up to that as well.
Everything else would be.
Yeah, thirteen, or.
Right, I mean, I, I would, I'd be very supportive of that, and if you can, if you can juggle and move money around, great. If you have to have a revenue conversation, I, hey, that's what we're here for, right?
Well, if you do, it would only be affecting our May-June portion of this current budget.
Right.
And we would, we would encourage y'all to consider that with the anticipation of realizing some revenue from the American Rescue Fund to, to offset any of that increase.
And as part of the, uh, package, can we also implement the take-home program?
Yes, sir. Honestly, um, yes, sir, we can do that. Now, the problem will be is that we won't have, every officer would have a vehicle just yet, but you can authorize us to start.
So, if you started. Yeah. Yeah, I, I guess I'm looking at it more from the standpoint of, of recruitment and retention. If we tell them that a program has been implemented, and that we are going, eventually have, make it available to all the officers in terms of, um.
We may not have the policy fully vetted by the main, but if, if council simply authorizes staff to establish a take-home policy for our patrol officers, I think that would give us flexibility to.
Do we have any, uh, like auxiliary vehicles that could work in, as a stopgap for those, if you don't, until you have enough vehicles? Okay. Do you think we can do it?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, okay. Got one of those Hummers?
I feel pretty confident that we're gonna be able to purchase first responder vehicles out of the.
A totally separate thing that, someone asked me a question, and I don't know the answer. It may be at a work session next month. Could you explain to us our participation in the Drug Task Force and membership and all that? Someone asked me, I said, I really don't know a lot about it. I think it'd just be something good for us to. Okay, yeah. Is that, is he full, full-time with the task force?
Yeah, he's full-time, fully reefered, each, each agency, some of the agencies that do, two, three, four, five, um, different departments.
And they actually go work the region, that place?
They're primarily, well, we have a team, so they have a pageant team, they're assigned to sheriff. Pageant sheriff. So, they have three, well, we have two now, but they, you have three. Um, and our guys are assigned to that team. So, they work primarily the pageant, however, they do have safety badges. They're, they're assigned to the safety's task force, so they, you know, they were set.
Okay.
Um, but that's a, they have big potential distribution or, 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 and they've all got a, but that's much, it's a lot more offers, uh, measuring by.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't know much about it, and I was just totally, you know.
We have, we have a high area, uh, one time, primary, we have, um, all the leaders, about seven, sixty, fifty, uh, eighty-one, ninety-five, so, also, through, uh, five, uh, we're gonna have a, uh, so, some kind of agency also, then.
Bo, how long does it take to get a car now? Couple months?
Uh, six months.
Six months?
Yeah.
If it's something not so nice, maybe we get it quicker. Yeah, when they're making them, when, you know, when they're switching plants over, yeah, okay.
We buy them on state contract?
Yes.
Oh, one question, which sort of dovetails with what he was talking about on the task force. Can I, you and I spoke briefly on this, uh, the membership dues is thirty-one thousand five hundred, and I realize twelve thousand is due to an increase with the task force, which still brings us back to like nineteen-five? I'm just curious, like, three years ago, we were fifty-nine hundred, and it's now nineteen, well, it's now thirty-one-five, but take away the twelve, puts us back to nineteen-five. Is that? Okay, so, oh, okay, so the twelve thousand is an increase on top of, well, what could've been another ten or twelve thousand in there? I'm just wondering how that increased, or is that academy fees? Is academy fees figured in it? Has that increased? Okay, I'm simply asking because in three years, that's a big, that's a big change. I was just curious as to how that happened. Okay.
Seems to have, Warren, Warren dropped out, that seems kind of.
Bo, I got one other question. It may not be budget, 'cause how's the, the next drug dog coming along? Do you have any needs? Do you, do you still have need of funding?
I didn't put it in, I do, um, I, I just know that I would have it with ladies, so, twenty-four hundred envelopes, so, ask me for it.
Yeah, your utility bill have the chief's letter.
It's, please, okay. 'Cause that, the tube was fantastic, and the more time we have not have one, it'll, it's not gonna be good. That's good news.
Anybody have anything else for Bo or Jen? Bo, you want, Jen, do you wanna say anything else? Bo, you all wanna?
I appreciate you both coming, and it's good to have the department heads in here to talk, 'cause it, it just really helps me understand what you're doing. So, thank you for coming. Of course, Bo's always here, but still, we, we change about.
Anybody else, I, I, we all don't have council comments, but anybody wanna say anything before we?
I had a quick budget question, just, I, I see that the two percent COLA, it's under mayor and council for those that impact the general fund, and then two percent COLA for, you know, water and sewer as well. Is that gonna be kind of divvied up in another revision?
Yes, sir. Again, what we didn't wanna do is.
It points it up, I get it.
Yes, sir, and, oh, you know what, instead of two percent, I'm gonna do a one percent, so we can fund it.
That's just a simple question.
Yeah, it's just, uh, place it in.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
It will, it will be distributed on.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Anybody else? You may have seen in your schedule, there's a, is a grand opening, or not, at, uh, Goshen, uh, Valley Care Management tomorrow at ten o'clock. Don't we have another ribbon cutting Friday? At, what is the name of that place?
Valley Bliss?
Valley Bliss, I think, yeah. Valley Bliss, thank you. Thank you, Stephanie.
You gotta make sure those scissors are sharp, 'cause we've been cutting a lot of ribbons.
Which is a good thing.
Yeah, oh, it's, it's a wonderful thing. Uh, the Chamber Bank, what have y'all seen, is early, it's in June? I mean, do we need to start looking for tickets, Steve? 'Cause sometimes they sell out, don't they? Or do we need to get a counter up there?
If, if council will let, let Mary know, I'll hear if she didn't go on.
Would you, I'm sorry, I, what, what did you say?
Uh, the council annual banquet is June ninth.
Chamber.
Chamber, excuse me, Chamber Annual Banquet, we can have around.
Didn't it used to be the Ball?
But if they didn't get to have one la, I don't know, something, 'cause they didn't have one last year, they're, they have.
It's a go-in, sitting down meal at the Menzel, you, I don't know.
No, it's at, uh, Shenador Woods, in Frontwoods, yeah. But normally they sell out, we have had trouble in the past getting tickets, so, uh, let Mary know, is that right?
I should go to that.
Yes, if, if y'all would let Mary know.
I have a letter from Kathy Sly, I'm not sure I can read, get, get through this, but anyway. Mayor, council, and staff, thank you for the wreath in Sly Pocket Park you put up in the memory of David. David was so proud of our town and all the people like you who served the town to make it better for those that live, work, and visit here. I miss David so much, but I had forty-four wonderful years with him. As David would always say, keep smiling. Always, Kathy. We're adjourned.